Okay, folks, thank you for your patience with us tonight. We were at a meeting in another building and had to move to this building. And that's kind of what happened. So I am calling the meeting of the common council to order. This is the regularly scheduled meeting. It is Tuesday, August 26th, 2025. It's 6:05 and we're in the council chambers of the city of Platteville. And we'll start with roll call, Collette.
Bob Gates.
Here.
Ken Killian.
Present.
Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Here.
Tony McFall.
Barbara Doss.
Here. The first thing on our agenda tonight is a public hearing. This is on resolution 25-10. It's a conditional use permit for a home occupation at 150 Roundtree Avenue. A public hearing has a set set of agenda items that we go through. We'll start with staff presentation. We'll take an applicant statement. We'll take public statements in favor. And tonight I'm going to ask you to limit your comments to no more than three minutes. So three minutes tonight because I've got several who want to speak and we have a long agenda afterward. Then we'll take public statements again. Then we'll take any public statements in general. After that, it will be council discussion. There will be no more statements. Then after that, we close the public hearing. And if the common council has action to take, it takes action after the public hearing is closed. So that's the format that we'll use tonight. So we'll start with the staff presentation. Joe.
Yes, so the applicant for this evening has offered to purchase property at 150 Roundtree Avenue, which is currently a single family home. Their offer is contingent upon getting zoning approval to allow a type three home occupation. So just for your recollection, a type three home occupation is when the property is still primarily a single family residence lived in by the owner of the home occupation. But they would also have clients or customers of the business that would regularly come to the property as part of the business operations. And also some part of that operation would include outdoor activities. So that is the definition of a type three home occupation. So in this case, the business being considered is a small event space. So they'd like to use the property for bridal showers, baby showers, private gatherings of different types on the property, both indoor and outdoor. So there are some built in conditions that come in the zoning ordinance for type three home occupations. The first one says that the occupation shall occupy no more than 45% of the residents. And that's basically just to make sure it's still primarily a single family residence rather than a business. Interior activities shall be limited to the hours between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Exterior activities shall be limited to the hours between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m., unless altered by the council. And any violation of any of the standards or approval conditions could result in revocation of the home occupation approval. So this request did go before the plan commission. They did a review and recommendation with several conditions. Staff also reviewed this and also makes recommendation, basically agrees with the conditions as proposed by the plan commission with a slight modification. So the conditions as we currently sit, coming forward to the council, is to recommend approval of the type three home occupation at 150 Roundtree Avenue to allow a small event center with the following conditions. That echoes the hours that I mentioned. Interior activities shall be limited to 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Exterior activities shall be limited to the hours between 8:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Business activities on the property shall be limited to the interior parlors and dining areas, to the exterior courtyard defined by the house garage and fence, and to the east porch and lawn areas located east of the driveway. The conditional use permit shall be limited to the current applicant. Any subsequent owner would need to reapply. No amplified sound shall be allowed on the courtyard or outside areas. There shall be a two year review of the permit. And there shall be a maximum occupancy limit of 75 people for the events held on the property. So since the last time, we did include some additional information in your packet that was requested. There's some information regarding liquor license, even though that has not been proposed by the applicant at this point. But there's information on a no sale event venue permit, which is permit that's issued not to allow the sale of alcohol on the premises, but to allow the consumption of alcohol on the premises. And then the other information is just kind of our standard municipal liquor licenses that could be applied for. And then I also included in your packet, an email that was sent by Mount City Bank that authorizes the applicant to use the bank parking lot for their activities as long as it's after bank hours. Since parking was discussed at the last meeting. So that's the additional information I have. Otherwise, like I mentioned, the staff and plan commission recommend approval with the conditions as discussed. Any questions?
Joe, did you say, I thought I heard you said that this had to be lived in by the applicant?
It has to be, the person operating the business also has to live on the property.
Person operating the business has to.
Right.
And is the person who's expected to operate the business, the person who's getting the conditional use permit?
That's the applicant, correct.
Okay, so the applicant then is expected to live on the property.
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that. And then you said, in bounding, you said the east, east of the driveway. For the council, I think we talked about this being the driveway that enters the property from the south. So I guess maybe clarification of that. Because I think there's another driveway.
Correct.
And east of that driveway would be a different area.
Well, that would be up to the council to propose any conditions that would liken the approval.
Okay, so I think that when I, when we talked, we talked about east of the, the front lawn being that lawn east of the south driveway. The one that comes in off Mitchell Avenue. Okay. Any other questions by anybody here? Otherwise, the next thing is the applicant statement. So we would ask the applicant to come forward.
All right, a little more prepared this time. My name is Amanda Reitz. I currently reside in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, and propose intention to purchase the property at 150 Roundtree. I think everyone here has probably heard a lot of in favor or the reasons that there might be some objection. And so I just wanted to give a little bit more actual background of our intention of the type of events that we're looking to actually host on the property. Keep in mind, this isn't something that's going to be open every day, like a cafe or similar. And so anything that we're talking about is essentially referred to as an event. So even a book club meeting would be considered an event by the standards of, yeah, you can't just walk in here and have your afternoon coffee or something like that. So, I mean, a lot of the things we're speaking about are smaller in size. The reason for the request for a higher occupancy is the plans eventually to hopefully extend the potential for tourism in the area. So if you're looking at, for example, Grant's House in Galena, how do we get those people to come up here to Platteville? And where can they go when they do that? Sure, there's other historic attractions here, but it would tell a longer story if they could actually do that and come over and visit the Roundtree House, who was familiar with, with Grant himself. And you could just bring a lot more people in that way. And when we talk about group travel, that minimum number on a coach bus, we're looking at 55 people, which is, yeah, I mean, you'd talk to anyone who wants to book something like that and they're going to be looking for a size that would be able to host at least the minimum of one coach bus. And so that's kind of where the numbers came from. Again, also, we're looking for a lot of events that might include children. When you start talking about bigger families, you get more children naturally. And so, I mean, a couple of families and you're easily up there in the numbers. And so it's not that we have specific events in mind for 75 people. It's just asking to not have that limitation of that smaller number. Again, the events we're looking to do, afternoon teas, baby showers, that goes along with the liquor question. Joe had followed up on that. And really, that hadn't been a main consideration, realizing that private parties might want to have that at their events. And more so, the thought process is probably mimosas at some showers and celebratory type drinks, but certainly not anything, we wouldn't intend anyway, to go for anything that might have open bar or these type of things. If anything, we're looking at beer or wine sporadically a few times a year. And even then, don't know if it's going to be worthwhile. We'll see what kind of private events people want to, to book. And if that's something that is really in demand, then we'll follow steps to do that further per, per the city's policy regarding liquor or beer and wine. So that part really is not one of the huge factors of the events. We're considering a lot more things with small groups, showers, children's type parties, maybe some historic presentations, those type of things going on at the home. And I think we can extend that even further if we would start drawing some connections with the other historic attractions and really make, make something larger than just this house and people coming just for something at that property. Part of my thought process on that, and I won't eat up a lot more time, but if you do look into similar type historic properties that are considered bed and breakfasts in most areas, a lot of them have some sort of an event space and they're doing something concurrently with that bed and breakfast, especially the number of rooms. And that's a far off, different story to have a bed and breakfast, but how they're using those parlor spaces beyond the bed and breakfast aspect, because the reality is the finances are just not there to not have some other function for a larger space like that. To make it accessible for the public, I guess, is what I'm trying to get after there. And so that's the main point, is to get people over to the house for a variety of things. We'll see what people want to do. We'd invite people over and have discussions and what kind of events that we would want to take reservations for and what there's an actual interest for. We have a lot of ideas. But again, it's, it's based on what the demand is from, from the public and what they would like to do on the property. We just want to make that accessible for more people.
Amanda, is there any council member now that has a question of the applicant?
Well, I have a question. I commend you for, for doing this. I'm always for business opening. Playing devil's advocate, advocate though. What have you researched to see who would want to use the place and only be 50 people? Like, have you done your research or groundwork on how you could actually make money?
That's where the mix is. So we have, you know, when I had first started looking at properties, even with Carrie, had looked at places that are storefronts that are, you know, could easily be a cafe and we could have book clubs in there. But to me, it was more so, it's a drain on a community. If you have a storefront that's only open for private events or reservation only, it's kind of an eyesore then for the rest of the week when it's just sitting dark. And so that was the intention of doing this in a home. So we could leverage having private events. So, you know, maybe around the holidays and things, you get a lot more demand. And then new year comes and it kind of trickles off. And that's balanced then with the book clubs or ticketed craft events, or you come have afternoon tea and make a wreath or something like that. So exactly, we're not basing it on making more money on one versus the other. And I am and will continue to be employed full time. So that's again, another aspect that feeds into how much time we can put into it. That's where I want to say this really to start initially, really a lot more of a passion project than it is something that probably will make, maybe will make break even the first year. I mean, but really that, that's the point. And then I think we could grow it from there. And so I think, yes, in a few years, we could make some money off of it to get it off the ground and really see it through is probably going to run at a deficit for, for at least the first year.
Yeah, I mean, most businesses, it takes most businesses at least five years to make money. I guess I was, what I was wondering was, had you like researched the probability that people really want to fulfill your part of your dream with the, with the place? That's, that's I was wondering.
Yeah, and that's for sure. And that's what I'm saying. I've got ideas for sure of plenty of events. And my sister is here as well. We've got ideas of things that, to do. If nobody buys tickets for them, well, what do you want to buy a ticket for? What would you come over for? Why is this space different than a meeting space at the library? What can you do here that's a little bit different? And that, that's really what we're after. We're not trying to compete with anything that's already locally here, but offer something different than what is already available here.
And so you would live in the building, in the house?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And they would too, for the, to get it off the ground. And then we'll, we'll see how long, hopefully, I'm hopeful they'll stay in Platteville longer, but my sister and her husband, small children will also live there.
Anybody else with questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next part of the public hearing then are public statements in favor. And I have had several people asked to speak. I have had also several people who have just registered in favor. So I will start by naming those people who have registered in favor. And one would be Gordon Reitz, 403 Putter Trail in Nacusa. Alan Klein, 70 Jewett Street in Platteville. And Lilian Neal, 630 Pioneer Road in Platteville. Now we'll move on to those who have asked to speak. And again, I ask people to hold your comments tonight to around three minutes because I think I have like seven or nine. Mike Osterholtz, you're first.
Evening. Always seem to get called on first. Michael Stroetz, 295 Bailey Avenue in Platteville. Came to speak tonight in favor, kind of last minute. So my, don't have a whole organized speech, but my wife and I live at 295 Bailey in Platteville. We also own the house next door at 315 Bailey, which is just down the street. Again, we are in favor of this in regards to the, the neighborhood and the property being very conducive to that. It's an older home in town that is a very well done home. I think a lot of locals refer to it as the old dean's home. Used to host events there when the dean lived there. It's a beautiful old home that you'd hate to see purchased and renovated, torn apart, or turned into apartments or something else that wouldn't be fitting to the house. So I do think it's a perfect fit for the house. I also think that Platteville is in need of growth in any way we can possibly get it. There is definitely a need for a space like this that, you know, we always say we want to be more like Galena. Kind of helps us be a little bit more like that, if that's what we're shooting for. I know some of the detractors will, you know, complain about noise and parking is typically the two things we hear. That is a permitted parking area. So thanks to Mount City Bank and their generosity for helping out with the parking with that. Also, my wife and I owning a couple of commercial buildings downtown. I know parking's always in a conversation piece downtown. If a business is worth going to, people will walk to get there and it doesn't matter how far they need to park away to do so. So if it's worth doing, people will come and they won't care about stuff like that. Again, look at Galena. As far as noise goes, it seems like the conditional ordinance kind of takes care of that. This is a mixed use neighborhood, so we do have people like us that are typically quiet, but you do have college students that live in that neighborhood also. And while there is the occasional party in the fall coming up, it isn't usually anything that lasts any, lasts too late or is overly loud. And I mean, you can hear downtown some nights from that neighborhood. So I don't think it's anything that needs to be worried about from that standpoint. So we're definitely in favor of it and we hope that you do really well. You did a good job speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next, we have Penny Roberts.
Hi, I'm Penny Roberts. I reside at 415 North Second Street, Platteville, Wisconsin. And I'm here in support of this facility. Just a few statements I want to make. I think Platteville has some beautiful historic homes. This being probably one of the primary ones. It's gorgeous. It needs to be used. I don't, I wouldn't understand why we wouldn't want to showcase such a home in this way, letting, bringing our community as well as other communities in to use it for different events. I think the city is in dire need of such a, such a facility versus having to go to a meeting room for a shower. That's about all we have to offer is meeting rooms. And I guess in closing, I'd just like to say that it, and not only are we in dire need of such a thing, I think it also brings revenue to the city. Perhaps groups that come to use the, you know, use the home for events would maybe fill our hotels, maybe shop, maybe stay the weekend. Maybe go to the university, maybe just do lots of things in the city. It brings more people into our town to use, you know, such a, such a space. So that's what I have to say. I'm in definite support of it.
Thank you. Next, Monica.
Hi, I'm Monica Miller and I live at 150 Roundtree in the Roundtree House. I've spoken to you many times about the historical and community relevance of this grand house. For 172 years, this property has been a community landmark and treasure, has a documented history of entertaining presidents, thousands and thousands of students and guests and neighbors. This magnificent house has been important to this community in the past and we need to do all we can to make her relevant and accessible to the future of Platteville. During the last four and a half years, Dave and I have done so much to get this grand house back in shape, a treasure for Platteville to be able to come and enjoy. We didn't realize our time as stewards that this grand girl would be this short. It is bittersweet. We are grateful that God and the internet have brought us a wonderful buyer who wants to carry the torch forward. There are some who have brought up issues, parking. We've talked about parking. There is no parking problem in front of our house since you gave us a no overnight parking restriction a couple of years ago. We have zero parking issues on our street. Are there parking issues on other streets that are closer to UWP than we are? Absolutely. Mostly because of student rentals and the Pine Street repair that will soon be over. Let's face facts. Parking at times is an issue from UWP all the way to the Walmart. Stopping growth and businesses from coming in is not the way to fix a citywide issue. Precluding our community from enjoying a historic treasure won't solve or tip the scales on this issue. This neighborhood has evolved in the past 60 years to now being a mix of residential and commercial. It is not strictly residential. There's a bank next door to me, a law office at the end of my driveway, four busy student rentals on Bailey that are already hopping and popping and classes haven't even started, a strip mall, a big grocery, a car wash, a busy quick trip. Main Street shops and Second Street bars are two blocks away. Pretending this is only a residential area is not today's reality. Communities thrive and prosper when the grandness of their past can be mingled with the brightness of this future. I urge you to vote for doing just that. Let's make Roundtree House accessible and available for our community to appreciate, celebrate, and enjoy. Thank you.
Laura Reitz.
First and foremost, I just want to say, I don't know if everyone has had a chance to see the inside of the Roundtree House, but it is such a special place to go and celebrate. And, oh, I'm sorry.
Please introduce yourself and give your address.
Oh, Laura Reitz and 403 Putter Trail in Nacusa.
Now you can go.
Thank you, council. But I'm just, no, it's truly such a special place. And if you've, if, to be able, my, Amanda's idea and how it just bleeds entire family and the thoughts of her heart, to walk into that place, we knew it was right. And everybody has a 50th anniversary or a special occasion that you just want everyone that comes to your party that, oh my gosh, that was just such a sweet time versus being in some lodge room or anything like that. And I'm not downtrodden that, but I just feel that a special place would really be a wonderful thing for, for this area and for this town. So, and I'm Amanda's mom. And I just, you know, to give you the heart of the buyer of this property, I just wanted to explain her a little bit. Amanda has, has worked, excuse me. Amanda has worked on international recruitment for college level students wanting to come to the United States and experience our great schools. She has traveled the world from Asia to the Middle East, India, and Europe. She brings the knowledge of customs and traditions to settings for people to share and understand different cultures. She currently is providing cruise guests the opportunities to experience what the Great Lakes cities have to offer. She handles all the logistics of cruise tours, offers guests a chance to learn the heartbeat of each of the towns and cities and what makes them special. Amanda's true heart is to own a historical home and allow space for local communities to come and enjoy special functions and plan parties for special occasions. Space where guests would leave with the yearning to visit again. The Platteville area offers a charming backdrop to, excuse me, offers a charming backdrop and the home offers the history to both making it a fascinating stop. The home currently has great stewards that have maintained the integrity of the home. This home sale would offer the passing of the baton with the new owner having the heart for the rich history and stories to be told. The venue planned event would coexist with character of the home, kind of like Mayberry. A special place where community can come, celebrate, and enjoy the elegance of times past. That's her heart. Thank you.
Next up to speak is Julie Klein.
Hi, I'm Julie Klein and I live at 70 Jewett Street here in Platteville. I'm, I kind of am going to just be real short, but it kind of speaks to what Lynn was asking. I will tell you that I get six to eight calls every month for people looking to have a baby shower or a bridal shower or a family reunion gathering. And we will always send that, we have the Brodsky Center. It's fabulous. We have, the banks have great meeting space. Like Mount City Bank is gracious about their space. But people, you know, or they'll want to use our space, which is too small. So I would love to partner with Amanda and just bring, I mean, have this home be shown and have people make fabulous memories. And I just think there's a need. And I'm also going to add that when Mike mentioned Galena, you would not believe, like, I think everyone should come to the front desk of the hotel and work with me for one shift to hear people say, like, right now, we have a lot of overflow from Dubuque. And once people stay with us, they will stay with us and then go to Dubuque because they love that they can walk on Main Street. They love that they can go get coffee at a couple of places. They can have great pizza or Mexican or. So I think people that live here don't realize how much people from outside love to come here. And if we could be able to then send them, or they could have their own event or they could participate in something in that gorgeous home, that would be amazing. So I'm 100% in favor. And I will share that I was blessed to meet Monica when she stayed at the hotel when she moved here. And I am so excited to see this next person come and just enjoy everything she's done there. Thank you for your time.
Next, David Miller.
Yes, I promised to be very quick. All right. Hello, my name is David Miller and Monica and I live at 150 Roundtree Avenue in the historical home commonly called the Roundhouse, the Roundtree House. We have been blessed to be the stewards of this wonderful home that has stood on that ground for 172 years. Now Monica and I need to pass the torch to new stewards as we need to downsize to a single level home somewhere here in Platteville. Buyers for a good, historical, 6,000 square foot home who have the commitment, the knowledge, and the expertise to maintain a home that is on the National and State Registry of Historical Places are few and far between. That story brought Amanda to us and we are so happy. Her family has brought, has bought, restored historical houses and will be the perfect new stewards of this 172 year old beauty. Amanda's plan to live in the home and use a portion of the house for small functions is simply a continuation of the social and entertaining that has, the home has always provided. down from the Roundtree family itself, to the many UWP chancellors, down to Mary Kelly and Mr. Frank, and finally then to Monica and me, and hopefully now to Amanda. So let's address the issues that have always been come up. Parking, parking, the front door to the house is off of Roundtree. The steps from the sidewalk come up and come to the front, front door. Directly in front of our house are 12 to 15 parking places. Across the street from our house are 28 parking slots that are city slots. And there are four of those which are reserved. But yes to note, right now, there are an additional eight that are reserved, but those came from the parking lot up by the post office that's now being repaved. And I saw they were striping them, I think, yesterday. So those eight slots will go back up there. So ultimately, there'll be back to 24 open slots there. And then, as we noted graciously, Mount City Bank will provide parking as long as they're closed after 4:30 on Monday through Friday and all weekends and holidays. So what that ends up with is 12 cars in front of our house, 24 cars across the street. And Mount City has, between the employees' parking lot, the main branch parking lot, and the drive-up parking lot are plus 75 slots. So we've got way more than a parking slot for every single of the 75 people, and then some. So I truly believe that parking is not going to be a problem. All those lots are really accessed off of Roundtree and off of Pine, and there should be very little part of issue with Bailey and Mitchell. Traffic, traffic flow naturally to get to those parking places is going to come on Pine and on Roundtree. So, and that way, they can access the front door to, to our house. So traffic-wise, I think there's going to be more impact to Bailey and to Mitchell from the four rental homes that are full of UWP students. There's a, in fact, at 150, I think there's eight students at that one. So there's eight, eight cars right there. The third issue that came up was security for the adjacent two properties that are just behind us. So access to the backyards of those two houses would, the only way you could do that is if you were in our courtyard or in our house is you would have to climb over the six-foot stockade fence at the back of the, of the courtyard, then across a black picket fence, metal fence, and then across a third wire fence. So I don't see where any of the participants from our house or the courtyard could get to the backyards of these other, these two homes. I think there's more of an issue coming from the four student homes on Bailey, where we've got weekend night parties with beer pong tables in the, in the front yard and alcohol usually involved in most cases. And my grandparents always told me that when there's alcohol involved, and after about midnight, the only two things that are going to happen are either jail or the ER. So I think there's a lot more issues going to come from the students than there is from wedding showers, wedding showers and baby showers. Noise, the last issue I've got is I don't see how there can be any noise issue from the house. The walls are one and a half foot thick with stone and brick on the outside. And the courtyard is enclosed, very private. There's no amplified sound from there. So I don't see where noise can, can be much of a, of a problem here. So in conclusion, I urge you to please approve the conditional use permit with a 75-person limit. I believe it benefits the community, it benefits the city, and it provides the public with access to this historical treasure. Can I get a big amen from the council? And thank you very much. I appreciate your patience, and I hope I made the three minutes.
We won't go there. Diana Terrell, you're next.
Hi, I am Diana Terrell and 845 South Chestnut Street. And I just want to quickly say, like many others, yes, I approve. We shouldn't have much of a problem, if any, or maybe some of what I feel might be some of the events, like maybe what's coming up maybe should also be included, like the Labor Day, Dairy Days, and the encampment from mining, from the mining museum. We can incorporate with that with the, with the, the Roundtree House. We could do a lot of things. I kind of watch a lot of YouTube. Just recently, the Daily Woo came through like last year. They, he kind of does like locations, like historical and film locations and stuff like that. So he kind of goes around and does that, and he has a big, I want to say a big kind of following as well. So he would like, maybe, maybe come through here as well instead. But like people like that, like bridal showers, people from like clubs from the, like swing club from the college could also come in, could do like dancing or something, kind of create, like, make it like, it used to look like with like at the Grants and Galena. They would do like the old historical dress and whatnot, not just for the encampment. So that's kind of what I feel like what we should also do, like to help improve all this. So that's my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Diana. Jenna Marshall.
Okay, good evening. My name is Jenna. I live at 403 Putter Trail, Nacusa, Wisconsin. I'm Amanda's sister, as some of you have heard, and I will try to keep this short. But I'm here today to speak in support of Amanda and her request for a conditional use permit at the Roundtree House. If there's one thing I can say about Amanda is that she has taken, she takes on a project, she pours her whole heart into it. She pours her love, her attention, and her strength. She has a proven track record of hospitality and care. During her years working at a university, she welcomed and supported hundreds of students, offering them not just service, but genuine warmth and thoughtfulness. Through her work with Great Lakes Excursions, she has continued that same level of intentionality, treating every customer with attention to detail and excellence. But beyond her professional life, Amanda shows the same care in her community. Her neighbors can speak to her thoughtfulness, whether through a plate of baked goods, clear communication, or simply her kindness day-to-day. She makes the people and places around her better. The Roundtree Mansion is a home with a history and a legacy, as we've heard, and it will outlive all of us here. Amanda understands that deeply and would not take lightly the honor of hosting events, and I truly believe she is the perfect person to steward this property well. Bringing life to, to it in a way that respects its, respects its legacy while opening its doors to small, meaningful gatherings like baby showers, bridal showers, high tees, you name it. Obviously, she's open to hear what the community wants. So I respectfully ask you to consider granting her this permit, confident that she will carry it out with the same grace, responsibility, intentionality that she brings to every part of her life. Thank you.
And that, those are the people that I have had register to make public statements in favor or who have registered in favor. We'll now move on to the next part of the public hearing, which are public statements against. And Ruth Jones has registered.
Hi. My name is Ruth Jones, and I live at 185 Bailey Avenue. And I live directly behind the mansion that I've enjoyed for 50-some years. And I'm here again to express my concern and opposition to the proposal of a type-three conditional use permit for the resident of 150 Roundtree. I notice I'm the only person that lives there and has lived there and can tell you all about Platteville, that my children went to school here. They graduated from high school. My kids graduated from the college. And so we love this town. And it is part of our blood, or whatever people say, once you come to Platteville, you stay there. And that's true. I've stayed there for a long time. As far as the students are concerned, the people across, the kids across the street, evidently, there's a new batch this year that has just started. And we haven't had any problem with the kids that were in there last year. They were quiet all year. They never park on the street, ever. They always park, there's a big, and they always park on the driveway. And the other day, when they had parked out, and I was talking to the dad of one of the kids, and I said, just so you know, that you, there is no overnight parking on our street, and there's a two-hour limit, and I'd hate for them to get a ticket, just new in our, and so, now Dr. Hamilton, that teaches at the university, is next door. And they are out in Maine now for the summer. But when they come home, if those kids aren't behaving, he'll get them in shape, I'm sure. They're right next door, and we haven't had problems with these kids before. The back of my door is about 30 feet from my back door, Roundtree back door. And that would be about the length of my living room. And the type-three home occupation conditional use permit states that the occupation should not be detrimental to the health, welfare, and safety of the neighborhood or interfere with the comfortable enjoyment of the property. I have pictures that I gave to somebody of showing how close my back, and I don't know where the pictures are, but I'd like for the council to see how close I am to the Roundtree House. It says they're allowing the property to be rented out to small gatherings and special events. Who are they? Who's going to rent out where there will be people coming and going? It said operation out of the residence that would involve customers and clients routinely coming to the property. Now, as far as residential is concerned, I have lived in this property, as I said, for a long, long time. Across the street is Hamilton, our Hamiltons, that they have lived there for a long time, and he teaches in the, at the university. And then down the street is another professor that teaches at the university. And people have stayed on our property, or our street, for a long time. I mean, like 20 years or whatever. It's not a property that, a lot. And so we're very, it's a historical district, and we're very proud of what we have, and it is quiet. The, I hate to say this, but the only people that park on my street are from the bank, that they don't want to cross Main Street, so it's, I mean, Pine Street, so it's easier to park on my street. And so then, I call the police all the time for the two-hour thing. Who's going to monitor all of these conditional things? Who's going to see where they are? So are there any, does anybody, oh, we don't want to forget Mary Kelly. Mary Kelly lived in the house for, she was the first one to buy the property when she came here as a little girl and enjoyed this town, and she had relatives that lived here. So she was thrilled, beyond thrilled, to be able to buy this house. One of the first things she did is she put in air conditioning. Now, it's not easy to put air conditioning in that house, but it was at great expense that she did. And then she put in thermal heat. And again, she intended to live there for a long time. And then she had cancer, and it spread throughout her body, and and then her husband was in poor health. And so they didn't leave the house because they wanted to, because they loved that house and took very good care of it while they were there. And I know that it's hard for a council to counsel in a student university area of how you balance your concerns for the kids and for the residents. And I understand that, that I think I understand kids better than the average person, because I taught school for 23 years and taught high school kids. And they're just wonderful young people that we have out there, and we have little breaks on them once in a while, but for the most part. And in Platteville, I just looked it up, and we're going to have 6,000 And in Plattville, I just looked it up and we're going to have six thousand students coming to Plattville next week. And these students are going to be just, I would say eighteen to, I don't know, twenty-two, twenty. So they're all right, that Good Time Charlie age. I graduated from here, but that was years ago, nineteen forty-eight. So but we had I think I've said my
Thank you.
Do you have any questions? Does the council have any questions that?
We've all seen your pictures now. So Colette brought your picture.
Okay.
Okay.
And just remember that I can't move. The people in my neighborhood can't move. We are subject to whatever you decide for us.
Your family is going to continue with your home.
Pardon?
Your family is going to continue with your home.
As far as I know.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's their home and when we moved there, my son was four and I wasn't always ninety-eight years old. I was forty when I moved here, so I wasn't always an old lady. But let's see, John was four, Lisa was eight. Janet was a freshman in high school and Kedron was, no, she was in seventh grade and Kedron was a self-born high school. So this is home, the kids come for homecoming and I just don't like to see our area destroyed by all this traffic and well, that's enough.
Thank you.
I said my piece.
Okay. That was the, the only public statement I had against. Nobody registered as a public statement in general. So from there, we go to council discussion. Is there anybody here who has discussion? Bob, or you, you look like you're
Not much that I haven't said in prior meetings. I know both residents in the one hundred block of Bailey moved there at a time when it was owned by either the State College or the University of Wisconsin, Plattville. And so for about twenty-five years, that was a a venue for university gatherings and parties. So this isn't going to be that much different. I, I think they're going to be very good neighbors.
Second that, Bob, I think that hearing Amanda's story and her sister's stories about you and then hearing stories with Ruth and listening to her, I think you will be fabulous neighbors. And I think there's potential for maybe some programming where, I bet Ruth is full of stories, where if you want to bring in a historic speaker, who, who best than to come in and talk to a group about what some of the happenings in the past about Roundtree House? So.
I have a question for Joe, Joe Carroll. And the question, the question is you said that well, I read in here, personal information. I'm a full-time remote worker. Now, you gave me the idea that she had to live at the place.
That's correct.
But I, I got the idea that she, as a remote worker, would have living at the place. Her sister, brother-in-law and two small children, two and four years old, so that those people would qualify as people living at the place so that they would not have, she, the applicant would not have to actually live at the place herself. She could be a remote worker.
No, she's living at this, she will be living at this residence and her job will be with the company that she works for is not located there.
So her work, it's like if I'm here and I can work remotely somewhere else. So she's, it's not that she's going to be remote, it's that her job is remote.
Okay.
So leave, actually Amanda said in her statement that she would live at
So I wanted that clarified. So I'll just say this, that number five, you're looking for a public statements in general here?
Now, we're at council discussion.
Okay. Well, I wanted to point out that yesterday I went to the location, 150 Roundtree, looked at the entire portion that is going to be used. And I was very impressed as the way it was set up. So that in respect to Ruth Jones, I believe that this property will be very beneficial. And I believe the way it's set up, it's not going to affect you. And if it does affect you at some time in the future, I believe that people can, you can apply to people and say, this needs to be corrected. So I was very happy to review the property portions that were going to be used by the applicant. So I was very happy to go through there and see that. My past history is that I worked secretly with Mary Kelly and Frank Evans. As far as I came in, what do you call it, the south door? And the south door, is that correct? Before speak, location is not the door that people will be coming to. I used to come to that door to help the Mary Kelly and Frank Evans with the situation one, which was noise coming from Piggly Wiggly. And also the amount of light which was coming from the building, the, from the parking lot across the street. So when I considered looking at everything there, I believe that this property would be a good addition to the city of Plattville.
Thank you.
And so I thank you very much for allowing me to talk.
Lynn, did you have?
I just want to say to, to Ms. Ruth, that however it pans out, I would love to come sit on your porch and listen to you, drink some tea and listen to some of your stories. I think you are a fascinating wealth for the community and I'd love to hear your stories. If, if this goes out where this is approved, please know that it won't change where you are, okay? Don't, just look at it as a positive change if it does anything. And I'd love to come sit and just talk to you. I really would. Okay? You want me to come? I could tell by your face. She's like, girl, she can
Lynn, I think she would welcome you.
I know.
Okay. I'll, I'll only say this. I, I, I think we've listened pretty well
Yeah.
to the concerns. I'm glad that we've agreed to no amplified sound outside. I think we've attempted to protect the properties behind with the restriction that activities can only be within the courtyard in the back or east of the sidewalks that lead into the house. So I think that there's protection there for the properties. And as Joe pointed out, there is a two-year review on all conditional use permits. So, and this permit, I would suggest will be limited to this purchaser. I don't know if that was in the, that's in the list of things. So it's not like Amanda can buy this today and sell it tomorrow to someone else because if she sells it tomorrow to somebody else, then we're back to square one. I mean, that person would have to reapply. So, and, and go forward. So I think that the council has done a pretty good job of considering the many aspects of this property. And so I, I, I guess at this point in time, since we've all spoken, I would ask for a motion unless somebody else has on the council is something to say for a motion to close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Bob and a second by Kathy to close the public hearing. Colette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. And at this time, if there's action to be taken by the council, this would be the time that action is taken.
I will make a motion to approve a conditional use permit for a type three home occupation at 150 Roundtree Avenue to allow a small event center with the following conditions. Interior activities shall be limited to the hours between seven AM and ten PM and exterior activities shall be limited to the hours between eight AM and eight PM. Business activities on the property shall be limited to the interior parlors and dining areas, to the exterior courtyard defined by the house, garage and fence, and to the east porch and lawn areas located east of the driveway.
The south driveway.
This?
It doesn't say that, but it should say
Okay.
east of the south driveway.
All right. The conditional use permit shall be limited to the current applicant. Any subsequent owner would need to reapply. No amplified sound shall be allowed on the courtyard or outside areas. There shall be a two-year review of the permit. There shall be a maximum occupancy limit of seventy-five people for the events held on the property.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Kathy. Colette, we added just the one word, the south driveway to letter B and we'll vote. Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. And to the Millers, thank you. And many of us have actually ourselves organized parties in that house. That's why we probably didn't come through again. And Ms. Ruth, thank you for coming. And you let us know if you hear any excess noise. But I agree with Kathy. I think you and Amanda should get together because if there really are opportunities for historic bus tours, I can think of no one in Plattville who would be more qualified than you. Sure. Oh, I don't think there's any porta potty use, no. That would require another permit. Yeah, you don't have to worry about a porta potty.
Mm-mm.
Well, there could be busloads of people, but they'll go in the front door. I, I assume that the people who are on the property would be responsible for not letting them climb fences. All right? Okay.
I thought they were going to install another bathroom. That, that's correct. Okay.
But they're, they're not a porta potty, so. Okay. I don't, that's, you know, Ruth, that's for the owner to, to figure out.
I'm gonna go over your house, we gonna spend half team, we gonna talk about it.
We will now move on to the consideration of our consent agenda for tonight.
See you guys.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. Please let me know if you want separate discussion or action. We have the council minutes from August twelfth, the regular meeting, payment of bills tonight, appointments to boards and commissions. Tonight I have two, Connie Gronemas to the Safe Routes Committee and Bill Closter to the Board of Appeals. We have licenses, one and two-year. Folks, as you exit, let's be quiet. Folks, as you exit, let's be quiet. One and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol as in your packet, a temporary class B permit to serve fermented malt beverages to the friends of our gallery at 120 West Main Street on Friday, October third and Friday, December fifth from four to seven PM. These are for artist receptions. A temporary class B license to serve fermented malt beverages to the friends of our gallery at 120 West Main on Sunday, November thirtieth from eleven to two for an artist Sunday. We have permits for the Plattville High School Homecoming Parade scheduled for Friday, September twenty-sixth from one forty-five to two forty-five, that goes down Main Street. A street closing permit on Hickory Street between West Pine Street and Greenwood Avenue on Wednesday, September third from nine AM to eight PM for the Newman Block Party. And setting Halloween, Halloween triggered treat hours. This would be for October thirty-first and the time of the event would be five thirty to seven thirty PM. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to approve all items listed under consent agenda.
Second.
All right, Colette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, I had no one register for citizens' comments, observations and petitions that are not otherwise on our agenda tonight. So no, is there any announcement that needs to be made?
Yeah, I have a, do, I have two questions.
On the, on citizens' comments, observations and petitions?
One question, it is about the airport.
Well, we aren't there yet, Ken. So just give me, is there anybody that has an announcement to make, any event coming up or anything? Okay, then we'll move on to reports. So there were reports in your committee, board, commission and committee minutes were in your packet, the first airport commission. Tony? Okay, Ken, you had a question on the
One question that says that there is a sinkhole at the fuel farm. And that's something that's going to be under observation to, to figure out what happened as far as the sinkhole. Is that correct?
I've seen it.
Who's on that committee?
Tony's on that committee. And Nicola's there. I mean, they have it fenced off, I think.
Yes, they have, they've filled the sinkhole now and they will continue to monitor it.
Yep.
Okay, then the other thing I had that came up was that
Airport Commission?
That was for the airport.
All right, so then let us go back to the agenda. The next question is Parks, Recreation and Forestry Committee. Bob, is anything to add?
Nothing to add.
Do you have a commission, do you have a question on the Parks, Recreation and Forestry?
I have a question on as far as the situation as far as what happened to the bathroom at Smith Park. It said that there was an agreement to have sharing of the cost among four groups. And for the city manager, if he's here, he could answer that question.
I can answer.
Parks Director can
Yeah.
answer that question.
Yeah, so the mechanism that was installed was faulty when they originally redid Stone Shelter. So that was now replaced and now the bathrooms are working. But it is split between us and the contractors and the installer and the seller. So there are four, four people. Whatever you want to call them. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, that was Parks, Rec and Forestry, Board of Appeals. Bob, anything?
Nothing to add.
Uh, Housing Authority, I have nothing to add. Community Safe Routes? We don't have a rep right now. So we'll move on then to action items on our agenda tonight. The first one, awarding contract for restoration design services from hail damage. Nicola?
Madam President, so I am pinch hitting for the city manager who has a family emergency that he's dealing with. So following the April eighteenth hail event, many of the city's buildings were damaged. And a lot of work has been done by city staff in, and the insurance company. But we need additional help in both assessing the damage from, from the city's perspective and and also working through the process of repair. And so the city has been working with Specialty Engineering Group, who have submitted a proposal to provide roof siding and window design services for the affected buildings. And also, the service will include assessment, review, specification development, bidding assistant, assistants, rather, contract administration, and construction oversight. The, the firm will prepare the documents, facilitate the bidding, and provide contract administration through project closeout. So it's a very big scope that the city has to undertake as far as getting these buildings taken care of. And, and so we're proposing that STRSCG help us with that process. You can see there under budget fiscal impact in the staff note that the professional fees are set at 8% of the accepted construction contract value. And the fees will be invoiced in two phases. And we anticipate that funding will be covered through insurance proceeds and/or capital improvement allocations. So the recommendation from staff is to award the contract to Specialty Engineering Group.
Hey, questions?
I have a question. How many buildings were affected by hail damage? And I assume that this building also was affected by hail damage. So Howard could probably answer that question.
I, I don't know the number of buildings. I'd have to look that up. Maybe Nicola has that number.
I don't have a number in my head. Actually, the majority of properties, but not all properties.
Okay, so actually, Ken, in the proposal, it tells the roofs that are included in this proposal. The roof on this building is not included in this proposal. There are several five lift stations. There's a dump site shed. There's some hangers at the airport, the wastewater treatment plant, canopies at, at the pool, and the Parks Building, Parks Building. And and something at Cora Street. I don't know what the Cora Street, what's on, where's Cora Street?
Cora Street is the museum, would be.
Cora Street Storage Shed, okay. Those were the buildings that, and I don't know about...
Just, just to clarify, in the sentence at the beginning of those bullet points, it does say that all city-owned roofs listed in the EMC report as well as the ones that are listed beneath. So...
18 buildings.
Yeah, they will, they will complete an analysis of all roofs to make sure that what the insurance findings were are consistent with what their expertise shows needs to be prepared. And was there damage at all to H-VAC units that you recall?
I, I'm, I'm trying to remember, but I, I believe that there was some damage to the roof and/or H-VAC units on this building, as well as, as others.
I remember times that I climbed up in this building here and examined the building so that I would assume that it had some damage. I've given up the job of climbing up, up on the roof.
Yeah, I think we've now allocated that job to Shannon Butson, who spends a lot of time on the roof. So Ken, thank you for, thank you for giving up that job and passing, passing that towards to Shannon Butson. All right, do we have any more questions? Otherwise, I would take a motion.
I do, I do have a quick question, just to, I think I know the answer, but just for simplification, most of us had hail damage to our residences. And we, we worked with an adjuster who was sent by the insurance company, gave us the bid, we hired a contractor who fixed it. So in this, this scenario, is, we're hiring a company to, because we have so many buildings that Howard isn't gonna have to run and do a couple, and Nicola isn't gonna do the museum or whatever. But, so just to simplify, that's why we're doing it, because it's, because of the volume.
It, it's partly because of the volume. It's also to have some expertise on assessing the damage far, through, through a different set of eyes than the insurance company. So the insurance company has done their assessments and their estimates. But when we discussed, we met with this company, with this firm, and they talked about, you know, some things that are really outside the scope of my expertise. But in assessing damage, it may not just be the roof surface, but there may be damage to softets, and there may be damage to trim, and there may be things that, that might have been missed by the insurance company. So they will make sure that, that the assessment of damage to each building, roof siding, window, meets what the insurance company has done. And then as well as going, managing the bidding process, looking at the advantage of bidding, all buildings together as one bid versus having individual bids for each building. They'll, they'll do that, and, and they will advocate for the city with the insurance company as well.
Wonderful. That's exactly what I was thinking. So thank you.
Okay. So do I hear a motion?
I'm moved to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with Specialty Engineering Group, LLC for roof siding and window design services related to hail damage restoration.
Very good.
A motion by Lynn, second by Ken, to award a contract to have the city manager execute, execute a contract with Specialty Engineering Group related to our hail damage restoration, assessment and restoration. Colette will vote.
I'll point out also that they had to work with vinyl siding. So the vinyl siding that was hit by hail, that has, some of those have to be replaced completely. So that's a problem too. So it's not just the roof, but properties with vinyl siding may have been broken. And so you have to, since they're so, some of these are so old, they have to replace the holes, bunch of siding that's vinyl on the building.
Okay, Colette will vote. Okay. Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. The next item on our agenda is a carryover from our work session earlier today. This is asking for a commitment to the State Highway 8081 reconstruction project. This is a Wisconsin Department of Transportation project that's proposed in two parts for construction in 2033, eight years from now. Lot can happen in eight years. So do you wanna talk about it a bit, Howard?
Um, just to bring people up to speed who may not have seen it or heard it, this is the project, part one would be the full reconstruction of Water Street between Business 151 and Pine Street. It would do just about everything except the large storm culvert that parallels the street. Part two is a mill and an overlay of Highway 81 of the asphalt section that runs from the intersection of Chestnut and Mineral to the city limits up by Lancaster and Ridge, grinding two inches of asphalt and then replacing it. Under the DOT's process, they need to begin design work and studies towards the end of this year, and they require a local share towards the design work and, and everything. And so staff believes that, that this is a, this is a good thing for us to do, to work with the state, despite the fact that they are asking for a share of money from us.
So Howard, you're talking, you're saying that this is a project that over the next eight years, the city would need to invest $287,500 in, from general revenue, and water and sewer would be tasked with almost, well, by 2032, I'm gonna say $3 million. Can't believe it'll be 2.2. And you want a commitment now. Am I reading this budget correctly? So when you say design costs, is that in addition to other city budget and water and sewer costs?
Um...
I have two charts in here. One at the top of page, whatever it is, and one at the bottom of page, 84 in my packet.
The, the idea here was to break it up between design, real estate, water and sewer construction, and street construction up near the top, and then at the bottom, to combine the items so that, so that we could see what each, whether, what was programmed for the city budget to pay for, what's programmed for the water and sewer budget to pay for, and what's, what the total amounts would be from the city to go along with the nearly $3.5 million that the state is trying to kick in.
Okay, so really what you're asking for is affirmation for this project, and then you'll need to build this into your CIP in these coming years.
Correct. Yes.
Okay, so Howard is asking us to affirm whether or not we want to go along with water, with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation's plan to reconstruct Water Street in two segments, those segments not including Pine Street and Chestnut Street from Pine to Mineral Street, but otherwise all of 8081 through town. And for our not, then we would have the knowledge that he will be including these amounts in both the city budget and his water and sewer budget in his CIP over the next years. Is that, do I make that?
Yes.
Okay. So his CIP request would be, include this. It would be my belief that if we approved this, this CIP request would be off the top. So it, it would be a guarantee that we would do that amount, and that would be off the top of, of any amount that was allocated for CIP.
I, I, I have a question that, um, I, I may be the only one, but when we had our special meeting at 4 o'clock, was really, and a lot of this kind of hit us in the face. And one question I have is, I know we're working on budget, but is there a way that we can time to, to factor in under the action things that we're supposed to take for both B, C, and D? They all relate to streets. I, if we do the first one for 8081, I mean, I'd, I'd go along with what staff is recommending, but I don't know how that affects everything else with the budget. And then we have more street construction, reconstruction projects to act on yet tonight, and I'm kind of overwhelmed with...
One's a grant request, so we could always turn down a grant.
Yes. But I guess my point is that for the two, it'd be B and D, right?
B and D.
C is a grant, the Mineral Street?
The East Mineral Street is a grant. It's a, it's permission to do a grant application. And a grant that we would not necessarily have to accept. It's a competitive grant, one that we would not necessarily get, nor if we were notified that we were getting it, that we would necessarily have to accept. Especially if its parameters were radically different.
So my question would be, is there a way that we can ask for a little more time to review, analyze this for action item B and D, 8081 and East Main Street, to see how it's gonna, it, we're dealing with big numbers for several years, and part...
About the, if we can answer that question for B, I'm gonna ask Howard as to the state, the state on that project, how long does the city have before the city has to make a decision on 8081?
We've actually been pushing it off for a while, right now. The, the state wanted an answer back in July, and we've been trying to push that off as much as we can. I can't force you to make a decision, but I would really, I would really like to get some guidance on this so that we can, so that we can tell the, the state what's going on. Because according to them, they need to set things in motion so that they can start their process in October, November, December of this year to, to meet all the timelines.
So I guess, so I guess, Howard, the real question then is, if we approve this, are you willing to say that this is the most important project, and that it is the top project that comes off your CIP? If we allocate you $1.3 million, or if you're allocated $1.8 million for a year, I mean, basically, you're asking us to approve expenditures for eight years, for eight years, and, and not go back on those. So if we're not gonna go back on those, then you have to be comfortable, and you have to be willing to sit over there and say, yes, that will be my CIP request. It will be top of the list. It will not be cut. I will not say, oh, I need something else now more than I need this. I mean, that, this is really up to you to make that commitment.
Okay, I'm making that commitment then.
If you're, if you're gonna commit to, this is gonna be on my CIP, I'm not gonna cut it, and if that's all the money I get, that's all the money I get, then that's fine. But I mean, you, you have to understand that we, we can't just authorize spending without some kind of idea of how that affects everything else.
Understand.
Kathy, is that helpful?
That's, it is. And, and Howard, don't take it wrong. I, I tend to follow your recommendations. It's just that this is...
Eight years.
It's multiple years. And in our meeting at 4 o'clock, we heard multiple projects. And it's just, the numbers are just kind of overwhelming. But if you're, you're comfortable with, with us agreeing to this project, I'm good. I'm good.
Okay. Yes.
Anybody else?
I agree with Kathy. I just, yeah, but I trust you. I'm trusting that you've mapped it out. Just, no, I can't shake no money from nowhere. If you lose all the money, Howard, it's gone. No, I'm just kidding. No, we...
So do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the Wisconsin DOT proposal for 2033 State Highway 81 improvements with funding as proposed by staff.
And as commitment made by staff to always include it in his CIP.
There we go, without mentioning anyone by name.
Got that? We're adding that to the motion.
I'll second.
Glad is still writing the motion. Now we vote. Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. See, on our agenda is commitment to the East Mineral Street reconstruction project.
As, as you had alluded to, this is basically staff's request for guidance on... uh, for, uh, guidance on, uh, putting in a s- grant request for East Mineral Street between, uh, Business one fifty-one and Broadway. You know, is there, are there other projects? Yes, are there other projects that, that are higher priority? I don't know at this point. Um, I'm not ready to make a commitment on this one like I am with the other one. But if we don't put in a request, we're not gonna get the grant. Um, so I guess the question is, how comfortable are, are we all for doing, you know, doing a project like this? Uh, in twenty thirty, at today's, um, CIP, that would be over half of the borrow. I'm not sure that I would be willing to do that. I would hope that between now and then, we can figure out a way to improve the, uh, allocation towards street CIP because we're gonna hit a bow wave here real soon on a lot of that stuff. Um, but if I'm going to, uh, to say something, I, I would say then, you know, we can, you can authorize me to put in the grant request. And if the CIP money does not work, as, uh, Council President Dos said, we can turn it down.
Especially if they don't, I mean, I, I guess I would ask you to be incredibly forward-thinking in terms of how, uh, how, uh, inflation, not only inflationary costs for construction. I mean, we can look back and see inflationary costs for construction of streets, but also, uh, the borrowing, uh, atmosphere right now. If we have to borrow, it's, we're probably not gonna be borrowing money at the rate that we're borrowing, uh, at the current rate. Uh, it appears that neither are gonna be. So I guess, uh, I have no problem authorizing the submission of a grant. But then if that grant is awarded, since it's a competitive grant, and I, I mean, I think we have to take a very, uh, serious look at what is being awarded. And as Kathy alluded to in an earlier meeting, can they change the rules? Yeah, they can change the rules anytime. And you've already told us that, uh, you know, we sometimes have to acquire property, uh, for ADA compliance because their rules changed this year compared to last year. So I guess, uh, I don't have a problem with authorizing you to submit the grant. It's due the end of October?
Yes.
Anybody else?
Um, Howard, you have, I have been on this council for a while now, and I have never been geared or steered incorrectly under what you've done. And so it, we're not, I'm not questioning or trusting what you're doing. It's just that we wanna make sure that we are behind you, okay? So I, I, if you think that we can get this to work, if you think that it's gonna, I mean, you sat down and did the numbers, and I'm hoping, and so I'm trusting you. I, I just wanna see the city move forward. So if that's something you wanna do, I'm, I'm behind you. Okay.
Does anybody wanna make a motion?
Oh, yeah, that's what we're doing. You gotta do it.
I move to direct staff to prepare an STP dash U grant request for East Mineral Street from Broadway to Business one fifty-one for the upcoming cycle.
Second it.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to authorize the preparation of a grant request for East Mineral Street. Uh, Colette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Killian? Cobb?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul? Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, the next item is determination on the East Main Street recon- reconstruction project.
Okay. We also discussed this one last, uh, meeting as well. Um, East Main Street, uh, would be reconstruction of East Main Street between Water and Broadway, uh, with, uh, poss- potential real estate acquisition in twenty twenty-six, water and sewer reconstruction in late twenty twenty-six, and street and storm construction in twenty twenty-seven. Um, and we have a number of different options. Option one would be, uh, the full, uh, reconstruction of the street, including, uh, new culvert. And it would include the acquisition of two fifty East Main Street and demolition of that building as part of the project. Um, option one A would be full reconstruction of the street to include the culvert, uh, to include seismic monitoring, monitoring and mitigation to, uh, uh, hopefully, uh, reduce the possibility of damage to two fifty East Main Street during the construction. Option two is termination of the project and returning DOT's funds uh, and settlement with the, um, with the design cons- consultant contractors. Uh, at this stage, uh, termination cost would be at least a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Uh, option three would be basically a resurfacing project of the street, not including, uh, the culvert reconstruction. And, uh, keeping two fifty East Main Street as it is. We, uh, we have some options listed on the table. Um, staff is recommending that we, uh, proceed with option number one, the full, full reconstruction and, uh, acquisition of two fifty East Main.
Hey, folks. Questions?
Howard, I have a question. I was thinking about option three where it says, um, staff estimates it to be less than ten years before failure conditions materialize. What if the sewer under the building there on East Main, um, collapses and has, has to be redone? Are we in any way liable for the cost of that building? Or is that something just the, the property owner's insurance covers?
It would depend on what's going on. My, I am not a legal person or an insurance person. But if the city didn't do anything, if you will, and for example, during this recent rainstorm, if something happened to that building and, and it collapsed or partially collapsed or did something like that, I would think that that would be on the building owner and the building owner's insurance. But my concern is that if we're out front, you know, digging the street, pounding, you know, vibrating gravel and stuff like that, and something like happens to the building, then it would be, uh, very problematical. And it would be up to the courts to decide. But I have a feeling that we would lose in something like that.
Thank you.
Your chart down here, your East Main Street budget estimates. What are you proposing? Uh, the twenty-four and twenty-five monies have already been expended. So you aren't asking, you're going to be asking for six hundred thousand dollars in the twenty-six budget?
Yes.
And three hundred and forty-five thousand and a hundred and, three forty-five, one twenty in the twenty-seven budget?
Yes.
And water and sewer.
Water sewer, yeah.
Well, water sewer has to approve their own budget.
Correct.
Has this been taken to water and sewer?
Not separately, no.
I would just.
Again, I would ask if you're willing to use this as part of your CIP request.
So I think what, what staff is planning is that if this is approved, then as part of the consideration of the CIP budget would be, should the six hundred thousand then replace a street that was otherwise planned for twenty twenty-six? Or should it be added on to what was planned for twenty twenty-six? And that would be a decision that would be made as part of, um, going through the CIP budget. Well, and then the council.
I, I think that's hard to do, Nicola, because at this point in time, we're looking at a one point three million dollar CIP budget, right, for streets? And now we've just spent ten or twenty-five in the last, Howard has said that will come off the top. So I'm asking the same question. Is he willing to take this off the top if we don't allocate any additional money? Because I don't think you can expect us to say yes with the, with, then the belief that you're going to automatically be able to add this for it to be additive. In other words, I don't think you can expect a yes and then say, oh, well, that now means the CIP budget is one point nine. Or two point nine or something else.
I may not have explained myself very well. I apologize. No, uh, I'm simply saying that, um, it would give the council more options if, if staff could bring this, if this, if the council were to vote tonight to move forward with the six hundred thousand and the other commitments. And then staff was able to bring forward that six hundred thousand as, um, as a presentation for the, for the council then to evaluate alongside other potential projects. And the council could then decide how it wanted to incorporate the six hundred thousand. As you've said, would it come off the top? Which would mean other projects would then be deferred. Or at that time, with more information, once we've gotten further in the budget process and we have more information, the council may look at the big picture and say, well, maybe we could do these streets and this project. But it would give the council more flexibility and options to decide a little bit later in the process.
I, I don't see how it can, I, if you're asking us to approve this tonight, I don't see how that gives us options. I think that gives us that set, that, that part of the budget is set. Because what if we said, oh, now you've brought these other streets, we don't want this?
Well, you're right, we would have committed to this.
Well, so, see, they're committing to that six hundred tonight.
Yes, it would be suddenly committing to this.
Committing to that six hundred.
Yes.
So at this point in time, it would be taking the one point three, if that's what it is, and saying you have seven hundred left or whatever.
Yes, if that's the council's choice, yes.
That's the council's choice at the time. Cause that's what, I mean, I think before, uh, tonight, I think it was one point three for street borrowing or whatever.
One point three is the amount of levy-supported principal that was paid off in twenty twenty-five.
Which is what we generally use for street.
Which is what we generally try to benchmark against for, uh, borrowing for the future years.
So that's what I'm saying to council tonight, is if we say yes, that means that we're committing to this project, which means we may have to cut other projects.
We may, yes, or we may have.
So I'm asking Howard now, if he's, he's willing to say that this is so important that we need to commit to that project.
Yes.
I mean, I don't, it, it, you, I, I said really during night, in a meeting, you can only spend a dollar one time. And if we're spending these dollars tonight, we can't spend them again later. And if we say we're spending them tonight, we can't in two weeks say, oh geez, we wish we'd have known that. Now we don't wanna spend those dollars. Is that, am I getting that right?
Yes, um, what I'm trying to, uh, encapsulate is that there are other aspects of the things that we consider drawing budget that, that can flex. We may not want them to flex. We talked earlier this evening about an additional one point one million of borrowing for a fire engine, which would take us above our desired benchmark of one point three. So that's something that will be a part of our, you know, future CIP discussion. There was no commitment made to that, but, you know, I know, um, that we already have a, a fire engine that's beyond its useful life. So, so that's, you know.
The reason I bring this up is, that's exactly the issue Kathy has been talking about now for three years. Is when we commit these dollars now, and then all of a sudden, another project comes up, it's like, but we have to have this. Well, if we have committed to this, we have committed. So don't talk to me about this other thing. Because we also have a responsibility within the city and the, within our constituents, to listen to their needs. So we have, you know, we walk the line here.
We're all walking the line between streets that need to be repaired and money that, that we don't want to have.
And we know that there's not enough money.
Right.
Okay, so Howard says it's that important that he's willing to put this before other projects in his CIP. So do we hear a motion or not?
I guess I move to approve motion, or option one.
I second it.
Again, uh, Colette noting that Howard has, uh, committed to this project as a top priority. We will vote. Okay, Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFaul?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next we have, uh, on the agenda is recreational trail prioritization. Howard?
Okay. Um, the DOT has a grant request period that closes on October thirty-first uh, for what they call the Transportation Alternatives Program. Basically, alternatives to motorized transport. Um, so this would be a grant request competitive. So there is no guarantee of funding. Um, I would be looking to pair this with a DOT grant for the other part of the match. So it would reduce or almost eliminate the, uh, amount of money coming from the city for this. And so we've, we've used this in the past for our Moundview Trail Connector Phase One uh, from the current PCA trail up to Mitchell Hollow Road. So the next logical one would be Phase Two from Mitchell Hollow Road to Broadway slash County B, which runs through, uh, Moundview Park. Um, but there are other trails and other trail, uh, segments that could also be considered. The Community Safe Routes Committee voted to recommend the Dog Park to Skate Park Trail, um, for a number of different reasons as, uh, as, uh, written down by Mr. Malischke from the Safe Routes Committee. Uh, we heard at our meeting, uh, earlier that the Platteville Community Arboretum, uh, recommends that we stay with our Moundview Trail Connector Phase Two. And I believe that there are other, uh, community citizens who have also, um, said that they would prefer that we do Phase Two. Um, like I say, this is a, this is a grant opportunity. It's not guaranteed. I just want some guidance so that I'm not double, doing double work.
Okay, and, uh, toward this, uh, I have two people in the audience tonight who have been very patient waiting here to, uh, register in favor of, uh, submitting a grant application for the existing plan, which would be, uh, for, uh, Phase Two of the, uh, Moundview Park, or, um, uh, PCA, uh, PCA trail to, toward the Cody subdivision. So that would be Christina Burr, who lives at sixty-eight twenty-six Woodland Road, and Susan Oxenford, who lives at fourteen eighty-eight Jody Circle, both here in Platteville. So both of these have registered in favor of continuing the plan that we had started several years ago, uh, go, doing the Phase Two of this trail. Any questions? Any questions of staff or anybody else? Otherwise, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to direct staff to prepare a TAP grant request for Moundview Trail Phase Two.
Second?
I'll second.
Motion by Kathy, second by Bob, uh, for staff to, uh, proceed with a TAP grant application for Moundview Trail Phase Two. Uh, Colette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Killian? Cap?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
McFall? Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, those are the end of our action items. We'll move on to, uh, discuss, uh, information and discussion items. The first is ordinance 25. X X amending the official traffic map. Thank you. Uh, no parking on the east side of Seventh Avenue.
Yes, um, we recently reconstructed Seventh Avenue. The street was narrowed. Sidewalk installed on the west side. To eliminate confusion and maintain the two lanes of traffic, it is desired to eliminate parking on one side. Since the sidewalk is on the west side, uh, uh, staff believes it's more desirable to allow the parking there and make the east side no parking. Initially, I left this without any signage to see how, how people would work and react. Except for the construction traffic down at the south end. Recently, there has been very little parking on Seventh Avenue, but initially after it was done, there was a lot of, uh, contractor vehicles and such for, for roofs and things like that. And it got parked pretty heavily. And we had requests from at least one of the property owners to, to do this. So I'm putting this proposal in, uh, out on the table. I have sent letters to the, uh, residents on the street, with the length of time that it takes the U.S. Post Office to get things to and from, uh, Platteville. Uh, they may or may not have gotten the letters yet, but, uh, you see a copy of the letter and who it went to. So that's, that's what we're looking for. Yeah, that's, that's it. Thanks.
So are, are you saying that now that there's not so much construction traffic, that nobody's parking on the street anyway?
The last, the last, uh, week or so, um, there have been very few cars except at the south end by Camp Street where, where the construction is going on right now. Um, but for the first, for the first few weeks, yes, there was a lot of people parking on the north end of Seventh Avenue and it was, it was pretty congested. And that's why I had the request from, from some of the neighbors to clarify that.
From one of the neighbors?
At least one of the neighbors, yes.
All right, so maybe this problem has resolved?
Possibly. I would like to hear comments from the people who live there, um, after they receive these letters.
Well, actually, it doesn't really give them. It really doesn't give them an opportunity to say, listen, we don't really need this. It really says with the completion, it's become apparent that there is more parking on the street. And it basically says we're gonna do this. It doesn't say. I mean, I, at least that's the way I read it.
Well, at, at the end, I.
It says if you'd like to speak or register.
In favor or against.
The meeting, but it doesn't really say, give me a call or anything. I'm just wondering if, if it, you know, if it has not itself resolved because Camp Street is done.
Camp Street is not done yet.
No, it's, yeah. But there are less contractors. I'm just wondering. I don't, I don't know that we need to limit parking if we don't really need to limit parking.
Howard, if I remember correctly, when you were, um, meeting with the residents over there about the sidewalk and the reconstruction of the street, it was an actual resident who came up with the plan that everyone agreed to and that you went with. Isn't that correct?
Yes.
Evan Larson, um, and so during those discussions, was parking even an issue? Or is this, I mean, there are construction trucks all over town right now.
Yeah.
And so I, it, it seems like if it hadn't been brought up when everyone was there to discuss the street anyway, this is more just a reaction.
A lot of it is reaction. But I, I just, I'm just saying that, you know, I, I told the people during the construction meetings that we would see whether or not something needed to be done. And if it did, then we would ask for no parking on the east side. And so I'm trying to work with at least the one resident who noted that there was a problem. You know, trying to get out of the driveway, trying to, to pass through between the different vehicles that were parked there. And and like I say, it appears to me to be resolved, but I, I don't have that feedback yet from all these people.
No, I guess my question was, did this come up earlier when you had your meetings with the, the people who live on that street?
They asked about it and that, that's when I explained that we would see because prior to construction, when we had the very wide street, there would be two, maybe three vehicles that would park on that two-block stretch at any one time. And, and so I, I had assumed that there would be just two or three vehicles parking on the street and that people would kind of use common sense and, and, you know, don't park directly across from each other, just stagger a little bit so that there's, there's room for people to go. But that didn't seem to work. I don't know.
Thank you.
I just have a comment that, um, I know that there was discussion some time ago as a way of making these street projects more efficient to make streets narrower. If we do that again, renovate a street and we narrow it, I think that needs to be a priority to the property owners that they are aware of that potential to lose parking on the street if that street is narrowed. Just an FYI.
Okay.
This is just to lose parking on one side and if only two or three cars park on that street. It's a small stretch of street. Anyway.
It's not very long.
I would be interested to see who actually would come out and would have something and say about it, cause it, that is the option that they would have. And if they are strong enough, if they feel like that, even that one person and they come out. I don't think we could do it on one person, but if enough of them came out, it's worth listening to. I would think.
Okay, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is awarding of the pool demolition contract. Uh, Bob?
Yeah, thank you. The city of Platteville issued a request for a proposal for demolition services in preparation for the reconstruction of the Platteville Aquatic Center. This demolition will focus on the removal and disposal of the structures and surfaces detailed within the plan documents. A mandatory, a mandatory, sorry, pre-bid meeting was held at 10 a.m. last Wednesday. And we had, uh, six, four local and six, uh, two other, uh, not local contractors at that meeting. So we're encouraged by that. This package, uh, will be a bid as a lump sum cost and will be subcontracted through the construction manager at risk. The work for which the bids are asked includes the following: demolition, removal and disposal of the structures and surfaces detailed within the plan documents. Bids will be opened on Wednesday, August 27th, which is tomorrow at 2 p.m. And staff, uh, anticipate bringing toward a recommendation for rewarding the bid at the September 9th, uh, 2025 Common Council Meeting. Staff will provide the bid tabulation sheet and the proposed agreement costs at that meeting, along with a recommendation.
Any questions? I see that there's a lot of stuff missing from the pool.
Yep, yep. We had a chance to take that out. We, anything that was stainless steel that we can reuse, yep, we took that already out.
Just, uh, the fence will come down and we'll reuse that?
The fence will, uh, we're gonna leave the, along Pitt Street. We'll leave that one up while construction is going. It'll be along the service road. That will take that down so the trucks can get in and out.
I have a couple of questions. Bob, I know I missed that end of July meeting because I was on vacation, but at that point, the timeline, even the one presented in 53818 said demolition in August.
Demolition in September. But anyway, go ahead. Yeah, the demolition package was prepared in August and the demolition itself will be taken place in September.
Read it.
That's all right.
And after bids are opened on Wednesday, tomorrow, um, how soon will you and whoever's making the decision make the decision?
Well, we're gonna make the recommendation by Friday, but council will be authorized. They'll actually say, okay, yes, please CMR enter into this contract with this recommendation. So September 9th, at that pre-bid, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bob, but I think I'm gonna lead into your next question. So at that pre-meet, bid meeting, it was the only bid if you can start work in September. So the demolition will start in September.
Hey, now, if, if the decision is probably made on the 29th and right now, weeks are important. Could there be some sort of special meeting or something to approve it before the 9th, like on the 2nd? Or?
That would be, yeah, I would leave that up to Clint and obviously in the council, but sure. Yeah, cause CMR would, I mean, they're actually signing the contract, right? But the policy always is for council to have this say and say, yes, okay, you'll be doing the work. So that's the important part. So absolutely.
All right, we'll discuss that with Clint when he's back. Okay. All right, next, uh, procedure for filling our Alder at-large position.
So a little distracted there by, uh, by, by Bob's idea. Okay, um, yes, so, uh, we have discussed this at a couple of meetings now. Uh, Alder Person Knoll resigned on July 22nd, leaving an open seat on the council. Um, a special election is not required and the position may be filled by appointment from the council. Um, there was a recruiting, uh, process, uh, for an invitation for candidates to submit an application. Um, there were two candidates that submitted materials. Um, I know that it was the intent of the city manager to hand those out to you. Did he do that?
He did.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, they're, they're.
Kind of bad.
Back.
So, um, so the intent is that, uh, at the next council meeting on September 9th, that candidates would be invited to make a five-minute presentation to the council, followed by answering five to 10 minutes of questions from the council. And then the council, um, would be able to take action on September 9th to appoint the new member with swearing in an orientation at the September 23rd meeting.
Are we anticipating that we would meet earlier or that this would be part of the council meeting?
Um, I do not, that's a great question. I don't have the answer. I don't know if it's been discussed with the city clerk at all or with yourself, Madam President?
It hasn't been discussed, I think. So.
Then I think it was probably intended to be a part of the regular meeting.
Well, I might suggest that we do a 5:30 special meeting and then we adjourn and then we come back. So I, I think that would be a better way to do it than try to build it into our regular meeting.
Yeah, then that's what we'll do. I'll just take a quick look at the calendar here. I don't think there was anything else special on the 9th. My, my calendar doesn't show and the city manager's calendar do not show. There was a, a license committee meeting, but those are usually fairly brief if we do have one. So I think we'd still be able to meet at 5:30 on the 9th. And this, I think, would be probably a priority unless there's something urgent with the licensing committee that clerk knows about. No, not at this time. So we'll go ahead with that plan, ma'am.
Okay, sounds good. All right, uh, I believe that's all of the action and information items on our regular agenda. There is a, are we still having a closed session?
Yes, please.
Okay, so we do have a closed session scheduled. So I will ask for a motion to go into closed session. We do not expect to take action. Uh, what did I do with my agenda that was telling me what the, what the, uh, here it is. I got it. So I would take a motion to go to closed session. Uh, via Wisconsin State Statute 1985, parent one, parent E, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. And this is, uh, specifically Walmart litigation. Do you move? Bob moves to go to closed session? Lynn seconds. Uh, Colette will vote. Gates?
Yes.
Killian? Cap?
Yes.
Parrot? McFall? Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.